Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council in the city of Long Beach on Tuesday, August 7th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. The Rock Hall, Captain Ramada.
Hi, sir.
Captain Ramada.
Yes.
Counselor Warren.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
President Aron.
Yes.
With the record of the presence of our city manager, Michael Dackey, and Corporation Council on the next meeting, and also to the floor.
Counselor Long Beach, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to your republic, our citizens, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for our first meeting in August. We'll get right to it with the city managers up there. Okay, as you've seen in the paper from last couple, last week or so, we received a final $4.4 million reimbursement for the boardwalk from the New York City Division of Homeland Security Emergency Services. That was the 10% that it was worth, so we have received all the funds for the boardwalk. Last week, we had the Long Beach Film Festival, International Film Festival of the Hill, with sold-out shows all weekend long, and we'd like to congratulate City Play Card, Kyle and Harvey, who filmed "The Love," one best comedy show in my knowledge in Scotland. The summer concerts here, this is in full swing, we have concerts four days a week. They kick off at 8:00 PM. Our national ballpark tonight is high tide, a reggae and whistle band. If you want a list of all the concerts, go to longbeachny.gov/each. The Palm Market is back as a reminder tomorrow for most everyone's inside, November 10th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. For additional information, visit longbeachnymarket.org. We also have a great program running this summer, which is Final Park, and on weekdays through the end of August, the rectors continue to run a family fun in the park program. Tomorrow's program is make a magnet, Offspring Park. Thursdays, it's make a picture frame at Pacific. Fridays, it's a puppet show at Magnolom. For more details, visit longbeachny.gov/rect. August is quarter following month. This month is an observation. We are in observance. We have shared stories and information about the beauty and benefits our employees provide, as well as the threats we pose while we're on our water posts to us. Please join us at our Facebook pages throughout the month to learn more about our waters, what the city has, and will continue to do to protect it and ourselves, and what you can do to play your part for water conservation tips and information, visit www长beachny.gov/hubworks. This Saturday is a walking in the curb bike ride. The event includes an 11-mile ride, not rated around the city of Long Beach, including the West End Canal, State Drive, Long Island, Talleyrand, and rural. If you are interested in participating in the event, registration will begin at the rectory at 8:30 AM on Saturday. And finally, beach safety. We are constantly pulling people out of the water after hours. It is not safe to swim in the water after the light goes to work duty. Please only swim in the water. Thank you.
First item this evening is resolution authorizing the city manager to issue a question on supply, transport, delivery, and concrete, and what was responsible there?
Okay, we do a lot of repairs to side loads and curb cuts when we do cats, sewer work, water work, and we're doing it in-house, which is saving us money. We're able to put something through our capital, which those are operating for us, and this is just simply for the supply of the concrete itself. Any questions from the council? Any questions or comments on the public regarding the concrete RT? Seeing no hands, next item.
All right, two is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an interest agreement with the local development corporation.
All right, I'll take it. And this, I know it's made some confusion over this item, so I'm going to try and provide the relevant background. This item is, is to help the city, and it's in the city's interest to continue to defend against ISAR in litigation of their business. And as everyone's aware by this point, ISAR is suing the city for $100 million. In that same lawsuit, they named the LDC, the Local Development Corporation, as a party despite the fact that there's no specific allegation of wrongdoing against the LDC. That's put the LDC in a position where they would like to make an idea of the motion to dismiss. The problem is that they don't have the assets to do so. The LDC does not have sufficient funds to hire, specifically hire outside counsel. Therefore, to do that, they need a donation to the city. The reason why the city has an interest in supplying funds to the LDC is because if the LDC should default, what ISAR will then turn and do is attempt to, to recover from the city. They will attempt to do what's known as pierce the corporate bail and argue that the city is at, or the LDC renders an alter ego of the city, such that liability should be computed from the LDC to the city. That's why it's in the city's interest to make this donation. With all that being said, we've done the legal research, and this donation is permissible, and we've structured it in the form of what's known as an interest agreement, which is a fancy way of saying a debit account. The way it works is we will deposit $25,000 in that account, and the LDC will be solely responsible for retaining outside counsel of their choice, which the city can have no input into and also ahead of owner. They will monitor outside counsel, they will supervise them, and they will pay outside counsel. And the reason why it's structured in such a way that the city is prohibited from taking part in any of those determinations is because when you, if ISAR can show common control between the city and the LDC, that increases their ability to pierce that corporate bail, which I mentioned a moment ago, and the probability goes up appreciately. So, lastly, I just want to, I just want to mention that the city wishes to continue to defend against ISAR, ISAR investigation. This is an absolutely critical item, not only for the LDC, but especially for the city. It protects the city's assets, and if the LDC were to default, it would cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars to defend against this argument from ISAR, which I guarantee you is coming, because they have no choice. If the LDC has no assets, it's incumbent on ISAR's attorneys to try and recover what they can, and they would do that for the city. So, we take this, we take literally hundreds of thousands of dollars to defend, and that's all assuming that we succeed, the city could also lose, in which case we'd be on the hook for the entire judgment, and that's why it's critical that this item be adopted.
Counselor, you raised an issue with respect to the LDC as being a separate entity. My question to you is that if this LDC is indeed a separate entity, why, as a council, if we are a legislative body, why are we prohibited from determining the legal firm of choice, the outside counsel of choice?
Sure, because they are a separate corporation, as is the city. We are two separate corporations, and it's essential that we treat the LDC at arms-length. The reason why is that if ISAR can show, what I mentioned before, the common control between the two separate corporations, that will increase their ability to potentially go after the city's assets in the litigation. That will enhance their ability to pierce the corporate bail. That's why it's essential to be paid zero part of those determinations.
And will the $25,000 donation then be perceived as us entering into some kind of act too, in terms of our legal standing in ISAR or litigation process?
We don't believe so, as long as the infrastructure that we've established holds up. Because that's the way that works, it's just like a debit. We deposit money here, and they do what they feel is in their, are in their best interest, and that shows independent control by the LDC.
I'd like to propose an amendment to the resolution. On the paragraph just before, now therefore the, at the end, where it talks about the issue of donation of $25,000 to the LDC for solving its school's abuse in their defense of the above referenced legal action, I'd like to add there, semicolon, contingent on initiating action to dissolve the LDC. I'd also like to add those same words, just above the resolve, and, and using the defense of the above referenced legal action, semicolon, contingent on initiating action to dissolve the LDC.
There's been discussion of dissolving the LDC, and I think we're all in favor of that, but I would, I would like legal counsel, before we vote on, including that in this resolution.
You know, and that's very discussed. I am also in favor of dissolving the LDC. That being said, I don't, I don't think it's a good idea to do this at this time, before we've had enough of hearing about the full array of legal research and what this could mean, because I, I don't know how this might impact ISAR litigation. I'd rather receive and afford pleasure in a cautious way, this $100,000 suit, and I guess if I were to articulate it specifically, it would be this. By imposing that condition on the LDC, you're essentially giving them what's known as a hostage's choice. Either take this $25,000 or else, and I don't know if that could be construed as common control in litigation. So, until we have the opportunity to do a little bit of more research, I'd recommend not adopting that amendment.
Just another question, is there a time for the essence requirement that this be done tonight? Is there a time at which the LDC has to bring this application to dismiss against some laws?
Yeah, their response is due later this week. So, time is definitely on the essence. I'm sure they'll go again extension, and I don't think it would be a problem, but time is certainly on the essence.
Thank you.
So, I have a solid motion, would you like a second to that motion? Say your second to the other motion.
Any other questions from the council? Any questions or comments from the public? Sure, circle them out. Mr. Dubach.
I was reading this earlier, so it sounds like $25,000 is for them to retain counsel to turn it full secret.
Correct.
My understanding of lawyers, they don't come cheap. $25,000, and I'm just guessing, with lawyers, $500 an hour, that's probably $50 an hour. Is that going to be enough? Or is this just like the stock? And it sounds like it's important, I'm not saying, I'm wondering if $25,000, we should therefore.
That's a fair question. Well, just seeing that the standard of municipality is $250 to $300 an hour for a lawyer or a student. It's a little bit better, but we think it is going to be enough, because we anticipate the LDC being dismissed since there's no allegation of actual wrongdoing against the LDC. In this case, we're hoping it's just a motion to reply, and the reason we've allocated $25,000 is frankly because of ISAR's indecisive submissions, so far, but I think it should be sufficient.
But it's not, I mean, obviously, the council can come back and give this again.
Yeah, the council can give it again, and also, what I thought I would mention during my presentation was that if there's any surplus at the end, the LDC is required to permit to decide.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Sure, Mr. Dubach.
We're in rest of 72th Board Street. I have a couple of questions on this. When the community host agreement was signed by the executive director, was that by board resolution?
Of the LDC?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Does anyone? Did the LDC get $320,000 from the, from ISAR?
No.
No, they never did?
No, we never got any portion of $4.1 million.
So...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, I mean, the community host agreement, the only reason the LDC is in this is because of the community host agreement.
That's...
And yet, ISAR never fulfilled their part of the community host agreement.
Well, yeah, there was never a project, it was contingent upon there being a lot of different things, including a project, and including my marriage certificates of occupancy. So, I don't expect that.
But then the LDC wasn't required to do anything? Well, that's, that's all...
Yeah, that's gonna be a question.
But I cannot understand how the city can give the money and not think they're going to be tied in. Isn't this a component, what, how do they call it, a component unit of the city of Long Beach?
No, it's things defined in, in the certificate of corporation as an instrumentality of the city, but separate and apart from the city.
It's defined in the independent order that it's reported, their independent order is reported as a component unit. So, I, I mean, the idea...
That you mean, so is it, that's incorrect? What, does that always get it right?
Oh, no, they don't. They have something like this, and you have the other side, and they go...
Oh, I hear you. I'm quoting from the certificate of corporation, though.
Now, in December, they asked to be disbanded. How come nothing was explained with that?
I don't know. I believe that, last I heard, they were pursuing the dissolution.
But they asked, boy, didn't they, I mean, they, they asked you guys, the council?
That, I'm not ready to do that, but I, I heard that's happened, I haven't heard the confirmed word, I don't know. That being said, I'm not sure what council actually is needed or not. That's gonna take some legal research.
You don't know what, what the council is going to do to this thing?
I don't know that the council necessarily has to do anything, I have to give up and do the research, I'm not an LDC expert. I'm one of the city, separate corporation, Celeste, I make sure that...
It's your own point.
Celeste, I should finish my statement, but I make sure that those, those streams are kept separate and apart at all times.
But by giving them money, how's that keeping it apart? I mean, the proper way to do this, in my opinion, and it's just my opinion, and lawyers or least ever, is that the, the city takes on this particular defense, because no matter what the city's going to be involved in, no matter what, you know, no matter what they do, they're going to be blaming the city. If you look at the complaint, it's almost all against the city. And I'm not sure that you and the LDC don't have some conflict here. The LDC might be pointing the finger at you, and then you really don't want those allegations as part of the, the response from the LDC. So, for you guys, giving it up to the LDC, and saying, hey, we're gonna give you money, doesn't make sense to me. And, you know, it just seems to me like another $25,000 that's gonna go to some favorite law firm or something, and the city's still going to be involved, and the city's still going to have to defend, no matter what you do with this. It just seems to me like a waste of money, and it seems that this is a corporation that's trying to, you know, they're losing money every year, they're not doing anything, they have very few means, they've accomplished nothing, and now they're drawing in another $25,000 into it, when it really is, I mean, this is the city's height, and for the city to take this on for the LDC, I think would make the most sense. Piercing the corporate bail, like, you know, I mean...
You're cutting your... All right, okay.
Last question, does anybody know who contributed the money initially for the LDC? I'm not talking about the grants, I'm talking about the contributions.
I couldn't, I couldn't answer.
Why? A lot of questions.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dubach. Please state your name and address of the record.
I'm sorry, wait, hold on. Monica Burden, Long Beach. So, I have some questions. Can I ask you, please, to find what an impressed agreement is?
Sure, it's like I mentioned, it works just like a debit account. You deposit money in, and then the LDC can draw on it.
And... Rafa Shad asking, what kind of organization uses an agreement like that generally? Are you, you know, how did you become familiar with that even?
An interest agreement?
Something you pick up on the trips of the trade.
Do you like what I use?
Well, there you go, that's a good answer.
One of those allows, is a surplus for it to come back, I think that's part of the functional...
But I know what an interest agreement is, basically being part of standard in my legal career.
Okay. So, you had said that there weren't enough funds in the account to the LDC to be able to pay legal expenses. What amount of money is in the account? And now, for the time you don't know, because it's, you know, it's not part of the city of Long Beach?
No, you know, it's a negative balance.
They're currently, they're currently negative $28,000, and they expect to lose another 12 this year.
Okay, so if they're at negative $28,000, not a vast genius, but I can tell you, $25,000 doesn't even make them flush.
Actually, it covered the question of litigation, it's just a little issue. It's not covered their previous debt.
Oh, I see. Interesting distinction.
That distinction is explicit in the interest agreement.
Okay. Try as hard as I could, I couldn't understand the distinction you were making about, you know, this, if the ISAR scenario, where if the ISAR then goes bail, and the LDC would be on the hook, why? And how could things get any worse for the city, because the city is on the hook for the $100,000 if?
Sure, if, if the LDC defaults, that's a judgment against the LDC, and since the LDC can't satisfy that judgment, because they don't have the assets to, it's just like any, any corporate, it's like a plaintiff will sue a subsidiary, try and get the parent's assets through the subsidiary.
Oh, man.
It's the same, that's the same concept, that's what ISAR would try and do.
But they already have the parent's confidence.
Before we can litigate, we get to defend ourselves in the litigation, and they may not win it. Right?
Well, we're hoping we win.
This is, this is a potential second by the apple that we're trying to make.
First, is it a possible scenario that the city could be successful in defending against ISAR, yet the LDC defaults, and then the city would then be liable based on the LDC's defeat?
Precisely, that can happen, yes.
But what, what portion of the judgment would the LDC be responsible for? All of it?
If the LDC defaults, they can pursue whatever they can prove damages.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dubach. Good evening, Ms. Dior, please state your name and address of the record.
Sure. Ms. Dior, Long Beach, New York. I just have two quick questions. Number one, did the LDC ask for the donation?
Yes.
Or they specifically asked for a donation for the city?
They did.
Not alone, per se?
I asked for a donation, they're right.
Oh, yeah. If there is no other possible way, place for them to get the money, per se, for litigation, immediately?
Yeah.
Because when they originally, when they originally set up, most of what the money they had in their accounts was the donations back in 2012, when they had like hundreds of thousands of dollars in their account, all being donations?
I have no idea.
Okay, so that's the first thing. Second thing is, where is the $25,000 that we're donating to them coming from?
Contingency fund, which is like a reserve fund.
Sure, thank you.
Sure, thank you. I'll just say, for... Please state your name and address of the record.
Please, for 36th and Ohio Avenue. Just to go back to the interest agreement, you know, I know that you had said that the LDC is a separate corporation or entity or whatever, but do you, did they ever submit to you what their budget is and what they spend their money on?
I mean, personally, they may share that, I would speculate that they shared that information with the controller, but not, not me.
And my second question would be in regards to this, that if it's so important to protect the LDC in order to protect us, why aren't any of the members here to be able to testify and to give us some indication as to what they're doing? I mean, it's not fair to you that you have to try to respond, but the people who actually know, they really should be here, considering that we're trying to help their back. If ISAR does prevail, you know, $25,000, if they do prevail, and the LDC is part of them, we all get sued, and they get sued, who pays for their, the cost of what they have to give ISAR? Who has to, who has to pay out?
Well, we are to the nail that they, that they're responsible for their own assets, a separate corporation, and try to preserve that, thank you.
Right.
That's the purpose of the interest agreement, is to preserve that line of argument.
But there's no guarantee.
There's never a guarantee of any of these issues.
So, and then, considering that they don't have any money, like, if they have like a negative balance or whatever, what's the guarantee that this $25,000 will not go toward whatever the negative balance is to make themselves whole?
We made that explicit condition in the interest agreement.
Okay, and then, the last, you know, question I have, and I think sometimes, like, we're up about the ISAR, litigation, what happens to the city if they do win and twice for this? Say they do still, and they are successful. With what are our plans? Do we want to be entertaining any of that at all, to like, look down the road to see what can happen to us if they do prevail?
I'm not saying it's not a fair question, it's just, I don't know if it's related to this item, which is a report, especially here.
But again, because if, if we're backing the LDC with this, yeah, with the donation, and we, and ISAR wins in their litigation, we can be, you know, the courts may look at it, we may say, well, it was an impressive made donation, but, you know, the intent behind that, and the courts may look at this and say, well, you may pretend, you may think that they were a separate entity, but in our eyes, they aren't, and we may be left also paying for them as well, so, and this is all in fact the taxpayers', so that's why I was just wondering. But I really think that it probably would have been better, you know, had they been here, and, you know, then, you know, maybe, maybe some changes that would have been necessary to this item, but thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Montjeff? Please state your name and address of the record.
Allison Montjeff. I got here a little late today, malfunction with my bicycle for a recent meeting, so pardon me if I ask questions that were unanswered. I have attended these meetings for about a year and a half, possibly two years. I've attended every LDC meeting alone. Not one other person, no resident, no, none of you have been there. You, yeah, you were, you were solo last time. So, I've, I've heard and seen and witnessed all the Florida, the LDC, and they have been talking about it a lot, for about a year, because they run a negative balance, and that $12,000 is for their accounting that they have to do. So, my first question is for Ramada and Aron, are you gonna refuse yourself from voting?
Why, I asked, why would we need to?
I mean, well, yeah, well, A, besides, you know, the optics being absolutely terrible on this, you two were the only council members up here who were part of this community host agreement stuff that got us into this whole mess.
So, Allison, just to touch on that, and you and I discussed this by email a little bit this past week.
Yes, and they...
We are not named defendants in the lawsuit, the city is, and the LDC, those are the two named defendants. If somebody's sued, some show your way, plaintiff defendant, that was the actual party. There is no individual party in this lawsuit that's not in the same. It's the city of Long Beach and the LDC. I don't know if a recuse would be necessary, I think it would actually be improper. Don't get me wrong, when there is a reason to refuse, I refuse on other items when it's necessary, but to refuse for the sake of, you know, loser of the optics, I don't think would make sense here. This is a serious item.
Oh, I know it's serious. It's basically giving, you know, $25,000 of tax pay or money to bail out a private entity that weighed $1.5 million in mortgage taxes for a corporation.
I would do it differently.
No, the, the LDC is involved in this lawsuit because they gave a $1.5 million mortgage tax waiver autonomously.
Your argument is...
That's why they're involved.
This resolution...
Right, is to get $25,000 in tax payer money.
Allison, when you're ready, I'll, I'll respond whenever you want. This is to help defend the city ultimately, in a litigation that we did not pass.
No.
Name the merits of the litigation, clearly, we don't agree with, which is why we're defending against it. We don't believe the LDC should be... We don't believe the LDC should be in the lawsuit. We don't believe the city should be in the lawsuit, but to turn a blind eye and not put up a defense, or to bury our head in the sand and allow the LDC to default at the jeopardy of the city, I think is irresponsible.
Rob, how many lawsuits has the city been involved in where there have been other people named in the lawsuit where you guys paid for the counsel for the other people because you didn't want it to go wrong?
This is a unique situation, I would say, Allison. In many respects, it's, you know, the LDC, they're a part of the community host, if you're in, and the city has invested interest. Um, I'm sure, uh, I, do I believe there have been a couple, perhaps, but not many, to your point. Just to clarify one thing, though, I-STAR never actually submitted an application for the, the mortgage recording tax to the LDC.
I'm sorry, could you, could you say that a little bit louder? Could you just repeat that a little louder?
Sure, that I-STAR never wound up submitting an application for the payment of, uh, the mortgage recording tax to the LDC.
So we're, I'm sorry.
I mean, I didn't give away a point or five, it was, that never happened.
The LDC did.
No, no, they, they, I-STAR never even submitted the application.
Right, so you're saying that this autonomous private non, nonprofit issued this mortgage tax waiver without even being solicited for it? Is that what you just said?
No, that was, it's.
Are you saying that it doesn't exist and that there's a lawsuit?
What I'm saying is the promises and covenants in the community host agreement never panned out, and that was one of them.
That they were getting a mortgage tax waiver?
That they could apply for that, and any.
But they were issued one. There's plenty of news, data articles on this. I'll forward them to you.
Okay.
But of course, at this point, we can move. Um, nonprofits can accept donations. I know that, I'm a front of a nonprofit. Um, and the LDC has accepted many donations in the past. Why can't they accept one now for this? Why can't one of the lawyers on board do that? You know, why can't someone do this pro bono? Heck, why not Harris Beach? They were so gung ho about setting this LDC up, you know, less than two months before we, before Jackson Avenue even like took office, like within two months of them being here. So why not have Harris Beach, you know? Has that been thought through, or are we just gonna take $25,000 of taxpayer money to give to Harris Beach again, like we've done so many times before?
Thank you, Ms. Montchett.
Aramo, I would like to remind you that your vote is going to be part of your permanent record, whether you vote to allow to give $25,000 in taxpayer money, which is essentially going to a group that was given a corporate.
Right, that's a vote.
And how very progressive of you. This will be on your permanent record.
Right. Ms. Dussel? Please state your name and address for the record.
Ah, good evening, Jay Dussel, Long Beach. Uh, this, uh, LDC that we're talking about here, this was, uh, created by a resolution of this council, correct?
Yes, Rachel.
Okay, and that occurred sometime between January 1st, 2012, and August 2012, when the resolution to create the LDC was actually passed.
If I, the date, I, I don't have the date.
Okay, well, let's assume for the purposes of this discussion that my, my date's correct. Who here was a party to the, uh, discussion about the resolution that ultimately resulted in the creation of this entity?
I don't know.
So basically?
Allison, I can't say if I was a party, I'm not on the question. Do you want me to tell you? I was on the council at that point, so.
Okay, so, do you have any independent recollection of what the rationale was that the city was behind, the city pushing such a resolution and the resulting creation of this, um, entity?
I'd like to go back to 2012 to recall what the, the purpose or the mission was for the LDC. As I said, you know, I don't, as I said, now I'm focused on the, this resolution, which is, you know, regarding litigation in the LDC. But I don't want to mistake that I recall, just to keep you to 2012, but that wouldn't be that.
Fair enough. I wouldn't remember my reasoning 2012. Uh, but nevertheless, it was created. Somewhere along the way, the city started, it was an obvious extracurricular, it's kind of an entity. Now, in creating this entity, presumably something, I don't know if this comes from the resolution creating entity or not, but I'm hoping from the resolution creating second whereas was an instrumentality of, of separate and apart from the city of Long Beach. Now, is that taken from the resolution that created the LDC?
I know it's in their significative incorporation.
I'm sorry?
It's in their significative incorporation.
Okay, so, as it was a creation of a resolution by this council, um, the composition of it, certainly, would be in a matter of interest to the city. But more importantly, I would think that the city's liability, its degree of liability for the actions of this LDC that was created by your resolution, uh, would be an issue of paramount interest to the city. So what, what is an instrumentality of the city? How, how does an instrumentality impart substantial liability to the city?
That's a great question, and that's the answer that I hope, that I hope to never have to find out, what, what exactly is meant by the term instrumentality. I'm hoping that since these are separate and distinct corporations, that liability will never flow or be imputed from our corporation to the next.
All right, so, so this was created by resolution of the city council, um, and this language takes from their incorporation papers. Were their incorporation papers prepared before the city adopted the resolution creating this body? Was, was it, was that incorporation created subsequent to the city's best resolution?
I don't know.
All right, well, let's move on to everything. Do they have the ability independently of the city to borrow money?
Does the city have the ability to borrow money?
Does the LDC have the ability independently to borrow money? They have needs, they fall short in terms of revenue, can they go out in the market and borrow money, whether that is bonding, whether that is going to the bank, whether that is a line credit card?
I don't believe so, no, I don't, I don't think that's in their, that's in their portfolios.
Okay, but is mentioned in other papers related to the LDC and the city? I'm sorry?
That's it.
Okay, then skip that last question. The city is relying on a provision of the city charter, uh, section three, I believe, that it purports to, uh, grant authority to the city to convey real or personal property, uh, as it sees fit to various different types of entities. Um, real property, I think we all agree, is real, can't, something you can mark off. What personal property does the city possess that it is at will to convey to third parties?
Well, in this case, you're talking, the property are the bonds, so, and, and a bond is a question we're proceeding under section three of the charter.
Have you read section three?
Yeah.
Briefly, does it specifically say monetary gifts or donations to third parties?
No, but we believe it falls under the rubric of personal property.
Right, right, right. We'll touch that further.
Come on, come on, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Bill Schloss, Long Beach. Listen, I've been coming to a lot of meetings and, and I just heard a threat. We have to be careful that the people on this side do not threaten people on that side, whether we like them or not, and, and, and that's untolerable. And I believe that, uh, Mr. Bender, uh, based on that vote, uh, you've got a feeling on how this city council is going. And the city council is doing a good job. They have done such a great job. I've been in this town for, uh, eight years, and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, all Democratic. And that's the way it's gonna be this year. There's a blue wave coming, and it's gonna happen. And so why don't we try and work together for the people instead of antagonizing on, on certain issues where they discuss it at a later day? Uh, our president here.
Something related to Mr. Schloss.
Excuse me?
Something related to this item, Mr. Schloss?
I heard my cue, and I'm going with you, but I, once I get started, I get tired of sitting there and letting my people, and I'm proud to be a Democrat, let my people tell lies and anyway, and try to ruin things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schloss. Anyone else?
Just want to follow up on a question that was raised.
Sure.
This is for council, but once again, I think a question with respect to can this LDC borrow money? Um, I'm prepared at this time to give an answer to that, or does anyone have an answer to that?
Yeah, my understanding is that they can't, but I don't have the viables in my mind, so.
They, they might borrow, uh, according to their financial report, they borrow money from the city.
Yes.
As I mentioned, I don't have the viables in my mind.
Yeah, they have to pay back, uh, 2016, almost $88,000 to the city for amounts owed on short-term loans.
I just also know that the LDC obviously has limited revenue generating capacity to pay back.
Correct, and that's, that's why I asked the question at the beginning, just for my first, per, um, purpose of clarification. If they were borrowing money all of that time as a separate entity, why are we now giving them the $25,000? That question is still, I, I still need information, because I don't understand. If they were able to borrow, they were doing everything separately, why are they still now, why are they coming back and entertaining? And we're saying there's some danger of respect to this common, common, uh, action.
As I mentioned, if you structure this as a loan, or whether you structure it as a donation, it's, it's gonna be, what's gonna want to be a distinction with that there in this case, because the, the LDC doesn't have the ability to pay back any?
So we're still opening ourselves up to interpretation in terms of what could happen when this will be engaged in some illegal action?
If I'm understanding your, your question correctly, that's the answer.
Okay, so then what is the estimated time taken then for, uh, the LDC to actually dissolve? If the conversation, we've always seen communication that last year they had a conversation about dissolving, how long estimate, I guess estimate, how long would it take for this LDC to dissolve itself?
The executive director has advised that the, the process takes about a year to complete.
Just as a, um, question, if the LDC does dissolve, how does that impact on litigation if you know?
It's, I don't know what to say. I'm not sure I can necessarily anticipate that, but my, if I were I-STAR, it would motivate me all, all the way to, to sort of turn their guns opposite in the litigation, since that's the entity with the assets.
My question is more, thank you, but, um, if the LDC is in the process of dissolving, is that legitimately exhausting any liability in this litigation?
Oh, as, as far as like a stay in bankruptcy or, or?
Well, if they just dissolve, bankruptcy I think is different amalgam here, but if they just dissolve by demolition, does that stop them of any liability in the litigation?
Not necessarily, no. Uh, they can still remain liable, and they can have a judgment issued against them, whether they are solvent, insolvent, existence, non-existence, but I, I don't know if the LDC is, I'm telling you, if dissolution would be to file some formal bankruptcy procedure, because they are in debt. In which case, what the bankruptcy court typically do is they'll issue a statute and everything is sort of, sort of, uh, bigger.
If the LDC, the LDC votes dissolve, yet there's a judgment rendered against it, it would be a hollow judgment. What's your view of, if you will represent the I-STAR, or the I-STAR?
Well, as I mentioned during the presentation, there's no question what I-STAR built. It will have the years before it prevailed, and use the, the LDC as a pass to begin to the city's assets.
Either way, you see all, all of this, I-STAR focus on the city. Whether the LDC exists, judgment exists?
I do, I just know, uh, it doesn't remove the city to have to fight off judgment that the LDC, you know, incurs.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Delory? Please state your name and address for the record.
Michael Wood, Long Beach, New York. I have some question. Uh, we heard LDC, uh, who are they?
The, the.
They have, yeah, it's a corporation, imagine if the president is council. Um, do they file tax returns? It's a corporation. Do they have minutes? Um, how will we get, terminate with them, or give them money, or consider giving money to a corporation? Um, that's all I wanted to know is. And do they have offices, directors liability? Thank you.
Um, as far as officers and directors, I can, I can tell you that they are a separate organization. They do keep their own minutes. They can do public meetings. And what were the questions? Did you file tax returns? If that was one of them?
Yes.
Is anybody here tonight from the LDC?
I don't see anyone.
Oh, who are the directors?
Well, I know the president is Scott Nygros. Uh, I know a few other members.
The members are, that's just a little, Scott Nygros is the president, and Alfonso Albright is the vice president, and Pat Cooper is the treasurer, Stuart Osnod is secretary, and Gregory Bree is a member. And all their financial reports are on their website.
I'm not familiar with it, but, thank you.
Sir? Please state your name and address for the record.
Jim Cardland, Representative for Long Beach, New York. There's an expression about throwing good money after bad, and it seems like this is a perfect example. Uh, I noticed that, uh, in the suit by I-STAR that, um, they had given them, the LDC, $320,000, and apparently they don't have any of that. Uh, I wonder if that's, uh, money that they were given because they had done something as far as the mortgage recording tax. I'm not sure. Uh, but in any case, um, they, they seem to have borrowed money also from the city, um, and yet nobody seems to know what they do. I mean, what have they accomplished in the year or years that they've been in existence as far as, uh, benefiting the city, um, or any entity that exists in the city? Is there any record of that?
There is definitely records of what they do, however, like, you know, the fact that we're talking openly about dissolving, I think speaks for itself.
Yeah.
What we all want, um.
Yeah, but as far as throwing good money over bad, I have to disagree with you as you heard from the.
Well, I understand.
You disagree with me on that? Yeah, it was a proactive measure to hopefully avoid having to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars later on when I-STAR tries to get the city's assets using the LDC as a pass for, so.
It's sort of fools ever expecting to get paid back from an entity like this.
Yeah, that's why, well, donation, you know.
And since they're all well-heeled individuals, you think they could put up enough money between them, $5,000 ahead of things, cover their own expenses, which probably won't go very far anyway. But, um, it's, it's just, you know, the city's in kind of a tight spot financially. It's a shame we have to be allowed to get things like this.
Thank you. Sure, come on, sir. State your name and address for the record.
Julie Ford, please, we said, what's the other street? Um, General Counselor, Mr. President of the C. We give it this corporation money, they signed the same community host agreement that we did. Now we're talking about donating money for having them defend themselves. Any lawyer can defend any action, and by doing all this and dancing around, you're an elephant in the room. We are taking all the steps, the steps we're taking may not get them to hire counsel that will do the job that we need done to protect our assets. We really need you to defend us and not do this, because I think we're creating a much bigger mess than needs to be, especially with a bankrupt corporation.
I, I appreciate the sentiment, Jordan. I honestly do, however, the corporation council of the municipal corporation of Long Beach, not the local developer corporation. I can't represent them.
I understand that, but corporations, corporations, I had a corporation, okay? I had this corporation to make sure that I couldn't be sued personally. This corporation is out there, they shouldn't be able to sue the city for this. If you want to go out there and hire an attorney that's gonna defend the city on their behalf, that's mine. But to take steps that they're gonna do what they want with our money, that we're donating to them, and if they don't hire the right attorney, or they don't do a good job, you're telling me where it risks too? I don't think that's the right move, respectfully.
I understand, and I'm hoping that whatever attorney gets hired, uh, you know, like I mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, there's no actual allegation of wrongdoing or breach of contract against the LDC in this case, so I, I don't think it's a very complicated motion. I hope I'm right.
I, I understand how you're reading. I, I understand how you're running the claim, cover to cover, I didn't see what they did.
Neither did I, neither did anybody else, and so I don't think it's going to be a terrible lead. Right now, all something changes, it seems like it's going to be pretty open and shut, and I agree with that, I agree.
Unfortunately, the way things go, everyone suing the city, nothing ever works for them.
Interesting point.
You know, I, I just, you know, it was a white tax raise, you know, we don't need to pay more, believe me, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for the moment? Mr. Lynch? Please state your name and address of the record.
James Lynch, sixteen, Long Beach. I apologize for being late for your presentation. I heard when I got here that the board unanimously, the LDC board unanimously requested this, these ones, is that right?
The executive director requested them, yeah, for the record.
So the executive director, not board, the executive director is Patty Moore.
For as an employee of the city, well... She's also the executive director of the LDC.
Okay, so, you know what, it's twenty-five thousand dollars. I spoke to a few of those board people, and it's amazing that we sit here and talk about twenty-five thousand dollars when we're leading millions of dollars. I would ask the board if this can be tabled until the board itself drafts a letter and presents it to the city, stating that they are asking for these funds.
I don't know what good that would serve, Mr. Lynch, and that's the first person, well, second of all, the deadline's this week, we have to get answers soon, so unless we're getting adjourned, we want to be able to show a board that way.
Okay, but if the deadline's this week, then we knew about it before, why weren't we proactive before?
You are, I said, we, we, the council, the city was extremely proactive in all this. This required a lot of legal research to make this transaction happen, and the city has been immensely proactive throughout.
I gotta, I gotta tell you, it's twenty-five thousand dollars, and you're talking about all the other things, and millions of dollars, and everything else that go on here, it just seems, it seems just crazy that this board wants to dissolve itself, it has no holdings.
That's true.
And yet we're defending, they're defending a group that doesn't want to be there. And what, how did we get to this point? I think this should be tabled, and whether the board want it or not, it should be tabled. Unless you get the money.
Unless you get the ball, it's too late.
Okay, but you know what if we, as long as...
You've seen another case, this, I haven't seen one before, it's very bad, trust me.
If you jump off the ledge and dive into this pool, then the city's going to be responsible down the line. It's going to force the city, phone one, twenty-five thousand.
Not, not if we went on a motion to dismiss, which is what it is.
Well, if you, well, if they lose, I'm not in the title, are you, are you trying to say?
No, that's what we're trying to avoid.
At what point are we going to stop the charade? If, if, if the board doesn't want to be part of the board, then why don't we just dissolve the board and let what happens, happen?
Because that can still result in likely, if we're civic.
It could, it won't.
You don't necessarily know that it could. But it will cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars again at that point.
How can the city, perhaps the city be completely liable to a uncharmed party?
You're missing a point. If there's common control between the city and, is that the, is the presentation?
I did, I'm sorry, that's why.
If there's common control, which is determined to be by the court, common control, sufficient level thereof, the city and the LDC, the city could be potentially liable for the L, for the LDC.
Hang on, I don't think I heard that.
So if the city could be potentially liable, or the LDC should support the liability of the LDC, it's possible.
But isn't the common control, Patty Moore, she's the director of the LDC, she's the, she's the director of the Economic Development Department. There's a, there's a common pressure right there.
No.
No?
No, I don't see the surprise, I've been in factuary with Patty, and that's why.
That's just it, that you, whatever the timeline is that you table this, until you get a distinct, uh, letter from those who are on the board, who don't want to be on the board, and have issues with it, to dissolve, to dissolve the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am? Please state your name and address of the record.
Bob Richards, Long Beach. I'd like to know when, this is a rush that must be done now, when did you first realize that you had to make this donation? You said you did intensive work on this. How long have you known that this donation of taxpayer money was needed?
They requested some time at the end of June, I believe, and during July, we got from legal research, and they ran all the issues, and came to the interesting period of the week.
And this is the first chance that you had to let the LDC know?
Yeah, when I thought it was, yeah, you know, there was, there were, when was this, the second meeting, July was very early, we didn't have meetings in the second half of July this year, so otherwise it would have been on earlier.
All right, well, my opinion is that it should not be done, you said they're twenty-eight thousand dollars in debt now. Or can you demand if you make that donation, put in a separate account for only the legal fees? You give them twenty-five thousand, which I wish you'd be twenty-five thousand.
That's the way you should have used it, yes?
Three thousand dollars.
That's the way you should have.
To settle the debt, that's what we've done. The, the, the agreement that's on the agenda specifically says it's for legal fees and in a separate account, not to pay them their other debts. If exactly what you just suggested is in order. Well, I think like Jim said before, it's putting good money in for the, if you know we're in financial straits here, every penny counts, and they want to be dissolved, it doesn't take a year, I am a corporation. By the time you finish with your IRS and everything else, it doesn't take a year that I can say to go with them and let them swim on their own. They, what did they do with all the money they had? Nobody knows, really. I know where every penny I have goes, everybody does here, I'm sure. Where did your money go? How are we going to give them money? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Please state your name and address of the record.
Ms. President, Long Beach. I'm sure that the vote will be, I guess, though, I'm sure that from you, you can see from the comments in the room, that if no one knows about the economic development of the city, and our public has done, it would have been nice if this board was here to provide the information to the residents on what the city has done, because to us, it looks like you're blindly voting. I know that you're not, but that's what it looks like.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing your hands?
I'm going to offer an amendment to the record. In the second resolved paragraph, where it's going to be a hearing that takes place on August twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen, we're going to amend it to say September fourth, two thousand and eighteen, which is two counts remaining for now.
Do I have a second?
I will.
Vote for a motion to change the hearing from August twenty-first to September fourth.
I will. Yes.
Yes.
For the board? Yes. Yes.
Yes. I request a resolution authorizing the city manager to issue a purchase order of supply transfer to the local development corporation. The laws just not fit it. Should we move the option aside?
I will. I will.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I request a resolution authorizing the city manager to issue a request of agreement with the local development corporation. Should we move the option aside? I will.
I will.
So, in doing my research for this, I spoke to a member of the LDC, who is of the opinion that, A, the LDC needs to be dissolved immediately, and two, that they should not get this money. I also spoke to the corporation counsel, who I think gave a very reasonable explanation of why they should. And I'm basically sitting up here, keeping my head up here to my pocket, calling upon them. And the question really becomes, that I think all of us up here are going to wrestle with this, because there is that argument of good money after bad. Is this twenty-five thousand dollar investment worth potentially alleviating hundreds of thousands of dollars of legal fees that could come down the line? Because ICSC is going to harass us in that regard. Well, I'm guessing, I'm not the only one that's kind of sticks in my core to say this, I vote yes.
I think the major issues were conflating two different things. We're conflating the purpose and merit of the LDC with the need for the city to protect itself by possibly having to help the LDC in this limited instance, defending against a lawsuit that can ultimately very possibly put corporation counsel, resulting in liability to the city. I understand the seriousness of a piercing corporate bail argument. I've litigated those, and I know that there is a substantial risk. Do you need twenty-five thousand dollars to counter that risk? I think this money will stand. Based on that, I have to vote yes.
That's a little more.
Well, it's unfortunate that the LDC has not functioned properly since two thousand and thirteen. It's also unfortunate that the majority of this information is not really shared until Friday, August third. We do not have all the answers with respect to how this will impact the city. I think it's also irresponsible of the LDC to put our city in jeopardy. It's also unfortunate that we did not have people who are part of this organization to share the proper information with us tonight. I've listened to what my fellow council people have had to say, but I still, without having all the information necessary, I'm going to vote no.
Thank you. I'm going to echo Councilman Bendo, as well as Councilman Mandel. I, I don't think any of us want or really desire to give this money or to have this, this type of item placed before us. With that said, the liability that the city would be exposed to potentially warrant the LDC to dissolve is too risky, and therefore I vote yes.
Based on leading counsel, in order to protect the city, I too believe it's in our best interest to protect the taxpayers, to take a pride in measures like this, I guess.
Corporate handouts.
I request is a resolution authorizing publication to hear the authorities and headquarters of the city, Long Beach Uprising LDC Ambulance Services. Should we move the option aside, doesn't make it?
I will.
Do I have a second? Board, I have a question. Yes. I have a question. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. City manager, hopefully personnel, please file against city clerk, or make a motion closing me.
I will.
Do I have a second? I will. Board, I have a question. Yes. I have a question. Yes. Yes.
Okay, this concludes our official meeting. We're going to start off with a welfare portion now. As everyone knows, it's three minutes of uninterrupted time. And please be respectful and maintain good warm. Yeah, we do have a couple of folks here, but first we're going to call up a voice out here from town, Mr. Dane Censoros. Cenesaros, I apologize. Good evening. Please state your name and address of the record.
Aiden Cenesaros, basically, I'm asking.
Thank you, I'll miss him.
My name is Aiden Cenesaros, I'm at the University of Long Beach High School, and a member of Voice out of Jupiter, Long Beach. My target is home, I go into the playground, look to the left, and back on the left. I want to replace both black boards at east and west side of the playground, to be, to be close to paint. Additionally, there is a post board which I will remove with the wood, and once it's taken, and replace with fresh wood and paint. I have attached pictures of all that. I'm sure one of your concerns is safety, and preventing no children from wandering close to work. I will let safety come to take in the area where work will be done and someone will be with you. My job is to obtain commissions, gather supplies, coordinate, and oversee the removal and installation of the items needed. Some of the preparation work can be done by requiring the following items at the park. Additionally, if the public works have a recommended painting agent, I can try to get the plaques to shine as close to what they look like when they were originally sold in the summer nineteen seventy-three. I know the reformation in the park in October nineteen ninety-three, I have attached photos. My target start date is, is approved right away, I want to complete it before day today. I am available to answer any questions through my laptop. I will list my contact information at the bottom of this document, if you want to get in touch with me. Again, Aiden, for the opportunity to speak tonight in double, and hopefully you can support my group and inspire my youth and progress for me.
Thank you very much. Just figuring out if there was a formal process for us to give approval for this, but, you know, clearly it seems like something that would be great for the community, and I don't know if any other members have any questions for Dane?
I, I did put him in touch, I don't know if the right people were, okay, I recognize the department, so we can, we'll be informed.
Okay, our commissioner of DPW is here as well, Commissioner Miranda?
Yes.
Give a wave. So if you want to speak to the commissioner about any sort of clean or anything like that, I don't see any issue with this, and I wish you good luck, and congratulations on going for your, uh, what was it, the Eagle? Eagle Scout, right? Congratulations, so just maybe check this out. Don't you say the fourth?
Evening, Denise, what is, since Ohio, I guess I'm evening in with Frank, someone to talk about water. My city manager, Ted, he welcomes up the meetings, and I'm talking about water usage and the need to protect our water supply, because we are entering critical states. And I know that I wrote a letter to the city government, they were going to church, and they were giving water park. And I guess even some of the other little talks with the city staff, to them, I did receive a phone call, a phone call, to explain the situation there, but thank you. But I did attend the LICA meeting this morning, and I will be attending future meetings. I'm asking, you know, that we take a look at our water parks. I do not ask that we shut them down, they are enjoyed by many, many children, you know, especially on very hot days, where you can't take them to the beach, so they do serve a purpose. But the problem is that the water parks run continuously, all right? Whether or not there is one child, there doesn't seem to be any efforts made to make it so that the water is like a lower usage, you know, comes out. Any type of conservation me, me, measures that can be taken, you know, other water parks have certain water hazards on it so that maybe that use less water, and children still can run underneath it. Many other water parks, correct the county, and I've been doing research, and I'll be going into what the municipal office as well, trying to advocate for this, and maybe I have LICA for some help as well. That, you know, a lot of times they make a census of the child, and so the water stays on till the child runs for four years, we have a button, so that for each element of the park, you know, that the child will hit a button, what do we go on for thirty seconds, sixty seconds, and then go to work. These are things that we need to do. We all know that water, our wells, we're getting saltwater intrusion, we know that it's becoming more and more... We know that it's becoming more and more dire in regards to the water acreage. And when I talk to a lot of the areas, many people think that that water is recycled or they don't realize it's fresh water coming straight from the acreage. So I'm asking you, this is going to be an issue, and I'm asking you, please, you know, like we're, we work for something really great for the residents here and especially our children in the city, but let's make sure that we do it smartly and environmentally and that.
Thank you. My understanding is that they do have the button. I don't think it's seconds though, it's a couple of minutes. It looks like a fire hydrant. I think that's got the button on top. It was broken at Georgia Park, right?
It was broken at Georgia Park. The other thing is, well, Georgia Park is one of the older water parks we have. We don't have as many water fishing devices there. We're waiting for the control board and finding the controller, the one that was originally there, they don't make anymore. So we have to adapt one and work on ourselves. Recreation is what trying to pop on and work with the kids have used, especially off the night. Otherwise, we have to shut it down.
And I understand that, but moving forward, I think that what you need to do too is instead of just turning it on for the whole park, what happens if you get one child there? And it's right, I mean, and it's basically is equivalent.
That's going to take a capital project that we'll have to budget for next year because these items are expensive. You know, so we'll have to really, really talk, we'll see what kind of more modern pieces of water supply that there are there. And we'll come up with budget, but it takes some balance to do it.
To your knowledge, are the other water parks' controls all functioning properly?
Yes.
Can you put in the new controls in there?
We're wasting time. We have matched the controller to replace the existing controller that's like over 10 years old, so.
All right, thank you, at least it's a step forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you, it was a step forward. Mr. Phil Schlitz.
I am a person who sometimes has to change a point of view. I was against this three minutes of speaking. So I did a little research and I spoke to some of you and I kind of like now have to agree with you. We must stick to three minutes. If we don't, we're going to have meetings like we've had recently where people just come in and really don't have anything to say and a lot of times they repeat themselves. We must enforce the three minute thing because it is important. It takes away from other people wanting to voice opinions on other subjects, they don't get heard. And we just have to have three minutes warning. And I urge those people who don't want to abide by that, it's a law. You have to do it, you could be taken out of the meeting. And you don't want that because you want your purpose to be gone through. And it's embarrassing to have someone from the board and to give one of you people the finger. We don't need that. We're here to do the will of the people and it can be done, just follow the rules and regulations. And I believe that the people will get wind of this and as long as you do what you're doing, it's not going to work. You have to go back to what is the rule and do that. By the way, this town is controlled by Democrats and I'm proud of it. Yeah, it's in political form right now, but there's a lot of Republicans that get up and speak and we give a speech, we have a list of them there. So there's going to be a blue wave and it's going to happen in Long Beach too, because the people are generally happy, not everybody, but are generally happy of what you guys are doing. And I urge you to stay focused, do what you think is best for the people. And I believe this city is really thankful for our police commissioner. Police Commissioner Tagney has kept this city safe. And by the way, when was the last time you've heard of violence within the city? Things are really doing better. You complain about...
10 seconds.
Okay. I will adhere by my rule of law and I do thank you and I put my heart behind everything I say into it. God bless you. Bye.
Thank you. Ms. Nancy O'Callaghan.
Nancy Dalton, Long Street. I called up this morning because I, the street sweeping department, because I looked online and found that my street hadn't been cleaned since May. And I didn't get a call this morning, so I went over to their office and I found out that there are two street sweeping schedules. One, five people actually cleaning the street, and then there's another one with the street sweeper. I thought we had three street sweepers, but we only have one. One is, a new one is expected in. The two that don't work are up for auction. We should, I was told that they should get about $25,000 each. That would be great to see, so that might cover the $25,000 that just gave way to LDC. But I also wanted to thank the two people that helped me out today, was Mike, the superintendent, and Donna, the administrative aide at the office.
Great, Donna.
And the thing is also, when I came into the building today, look what I found. I thought we'd get these delivered in March. This is the first time I'm seeing it. I know I spoke at one of the city council meetings, I wear this clothes, and everybody looked at me like I had a bird. Apparently, it does exist. And somebody down in the lobby looked behind the counter at the table down in the lobby and apparently that's where they were. So they weren't distributed to the residents. August 7th.
They were distributed via mail. I'm sorry if you didn't get one in the mail, but they did go out in the mail.
Nobody on my block got it. Good answer. It's the City of Long Beach Summer Directory of...
Okay, I'm being corrected. It was not sent to the mail. I had one in my mailbox. I assume it was mailed for the most...
You must have got a special delivery.
Yes.
Shays.
Welcome. I appreciate this three gentlemen. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm looking forward to speaking with you because you hear the same voices very often and the same opinions. We are four generations in this town and are in the community quite a bit. And I do need to really communicate to you some community feelings that are a little contrary to what we heard earlier. There is mistrust and clearly it's widespread. Investigations, there's audits, cities, worse, financial situation decades. Here's anger. The city is on line for $100 million dollars, assuming it's held up in appeal for one reason, the municipality's confidence. And there's been no arguing about that. The taxes are going up to the roof, services are marginalized, payroll heavy, infrastructure's crumbling, not federal, beach, federal. And this frustration, why? Because there's no leadership. We are without a city manager that has a vision and a plan. Why is that? There are candidates available. I don't think the system can fix itself. Corporations, when they have this kind of decay, in terms of decay, do not look to repair from the inside, they go from the outside. We need an outside voice, we need it now. We need a city manager that's interested. I think of the days when Jack Schneer took over, those first couple of years, came up sandy and with a lot of energy until perhaps his vision was diverted. We need someone like that and we need it now. We need it from the outside. The cost is immaterial. We make this money back in six months.
Thank you. Mr. Roy Lester.
I'm going to comment on that last comment. We all, with city manager search, control of search.
Please use your time. We're still searching, as you know.
But you don't see any end to this? I mean, this has been going on for months and months. Why is it taking so long?
I can't answer that, sir.
Can anyone answer it? Can anyone answer it? Can you even answer that, a yes or no? No, it's not. I mean, you know, in my time, we had to hire superimendants, which had a much bigger budget than the school of the city. And we never, never went months and months without it. And you know what? When people came up and asked, "How is the search going?", we had answers. And now I'm sitting here and asking the five of you, none of you can come up with an answer. It's not really good.
Mr. Lester, President, our search is ongoing. Will we have it?
What?
But it hasn't stopped. It's still ongoing and I don't think anybody's figured it out. Unless I'm wrong, has any council members thrown their hands up and said they're not continuing the search? I'm sure I can speak to Councilwoman Moore. Today, she actually sent rather an email memorializing the efforts this council is taking to actually conduct the search and we'll leave, because of course we can't express names, we're not allowed to do that. But the amount of candidates, I think it's continuing.
Yes, and it could be continuing for years under that. I'm asking, you guys don't see an end to it? You don't see a reason that it's going on so long? And to be honest, a citizen's point of view, the answer is, well, we have no answer. It's really, you know, he's right. This city is without leadership. And Mr. Tagney, I mean, I, you know, if you were may manager, that would be fine because you know how to lead, but you can't be doing everything. I understand that.
But artificial hate isn't helpful either, saying, "We'll be done in a month." That's not fair to the community either.
Wait, but that's how the real world operates. Okay, yes, yes, you're involved, you know? And when you get served with something, you know what? That's an art, that's a date, that's a real date.
Like a motion to dismiss. Does that, we haven't given time.
Okay, let me ask you a question about that. Let me ask you a question. This is a lawsuit from May, okay? And yet, this suddenly came out on Friday. Friday was the first time we knew about that. Now, I understand you, you know, as I was told, there was about two months of research into that. Yet, when we came up, you guys knew nothing about this corporation, nothing. I mean, you know, nobody knows how this happened, nobody knows how we got into this. And the fact that Patty Born, who's the executive director, we don't even know if she was authorized to enter into this agreement. Patty Born is an employee of the city, an employee of the city. This is a lawsuit that the city should be defending and you guys know it. Because there's no way this is not a separate entity. You know this, Scott, come on.
Mr. Lester, I'm going to, and I don't want to keep on you, but it's on the busy area. We'll have to agree to disagree. I believe you're mischaracterizing a lot of the things you just said. I do believe you believe them. I think we have a difference of opinion and I completely believe it's a difference of opinion.
Yes.
And you know very well, that somebody can serve in one role, for example, in a firm, tell them you're a stewardage and it's two separate responsibilities and duties. So Patty Born, truth, lived in that type of situation. We don't control the LDC, so I can't speak to it.
But you can defend it, Scott. You can defend it, the city can defend it. And one of the things that bothers me is if the LDC comes in and says, "Hey, the city told us to do that, they're throwing you under the bus." And now you have no control over it. Nobody ever said it should be defaulted. I agree it should be defaulted, but it should be defended by the true party of interest. And the true party of interest is the city. Now, did anybody ask them if you could get them adjourned?
They've gotten one ready.
Obviously, you got one?
Yes.
So you knew about this, what? I just...
Mr. Lester, I believe I explained earlier, it wasn't two months. We were asked at the end of the year, in July, we conducted research and there were no meetings for the last three weeks in July. That's the reason why.
Yes, it was, it was on the 13th and the 17th.
I just finished my topic.
Okay, but just try to keep it honest, all right, Rob?
Roy, that is, this wouldn't have been on in July, had there been a meeting. There weren't, just the way the calendar worked out, there weren't meetings last...
It was July 15th, you had an emergency meeting for the air commission. Remember that?
Yes.
And what happened on that? July 17th, you had a meeting.
I wasn't ready at that time. I wasn't ready by July.
This is a May lawsuit, Rob, a May lawsuit. You guys know about this all this time. I don't understand it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lester. Time is up.
Mr. Dubeck, first of all, first of all, it's not just sticking to the mic.
I'm sorry.
Texting my wife at home, she says she can't hear you. That's first of all. I already invited everybody, speak for the night, I sit this right here, she's coming back. I'm sure I have some time, can you tell me all? First of all, second of all, the last three weeks, I noticed that the dredging, the dredging was not out there. Is there a reason, was there a problem? Can I see it back again, there's a problem? Mike, say it.
Yes, they sucked up some clay. The area that they were working in was devoid of the proper sand and it was also so extensive wave action, so they had to dry dock it with wave action and when they brought it back out, it did break down, it's up there now.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I noticed, I noticed Monday, Monday was on the boardwalk when I was driving my bike, which is my next segment. Three weeks ago, I researched, talked to John Maranto about the signs on boardwalk. He paid for those signs last year, not an ideal situation. And on my group research, it has to be on the beach. I was told by John that the reason they don't have it on there, people wanted to throw them on the boardwalk every day and have to pick them up. I'm on the boardwalk every day, 6:30 in the morning. Most of the signs are always there. They're not, obviously they're not there now. Two weeks ago, I mentioned that also, everybody made their notes. I was on the boardwalk yesterday, there's still no signs. There's still a good three months of people actively being on the boardwalk. And yes, not an ideal situation, but it's been done. So I wondered why they're not, but I know, Mike, you pushed this last year. I don't understand the problem.
People will push it tomorrow, she's going to hand you that.
Right, okay, thank you.
Mr. Jake Nelson.
I'm good.
Ms. Liz Chastain.
Why don't you just look?
Liz Preston, Wyoming. I'm going to use two separate hats, my first hat, so I want to put, everyone in this room where there's phones, ding ding ding, for the flood alert. Thank you so much for signing up for your emergency alert. You're...
Are you there?
That's one head time. I want to bring this to your attention as a symbol of what was and is currently happening in our city. I wanted to say, your city, as when the few must come before you, you are a tree that serves the... servants of the kingdom, or we are characters in the games of thrones. Past injustices become present day tragedies. Old grievances have a way of resurfacing, because we are not being heard, and every voice in this city matters. Again, I emphasize that the communication from the throne to the lands is getting muffled by perceived incompetence." This was given to me last week. The mom wanted to know whatever happened, I'm passing around some photos, this was on her, that you, this, the mom wanted to know whatever happened. Did the city ever get the donation money? When the city said that they were salvaging this wall, the other picture is not what we expected. We've learned some things that outside our constellation since 2015, what we have yet learned is getting the messages to those that ask questions, without feeling like we are being intrusive, or voting the members of council into conflict. This is not about the art being destroyed, that they force no communication. This is about our current situation. When we hear nothing about a city manager, plans for our future relency, or being tandered to in emails, that do not reflect the issues addressed, you are voted in to be our leaders, and from the outside the post, your castle is crumbling. I leave you with this, please start answering our questions, and stop shaking your head and rolling your eyes, I really appreciate it. And start communicating, letting us know what's going on. Have a week. Thank you.
Ms. Allison Wych.
Simmer now. Um, the, where did you have it? It's written about, was just here, talked about those signs. Um, you guys know that those aren't false, right? They're in a big junk pile, kind of near where that pile of junk was found, just sitting there. There's no need for them to be sitting there. If you're lacking staff to bring them out, get the Boy Scouts to do it, or some people pay the curbs or something, um, I mean, like, it's just, you clearly don't care about the safety of bicycles, or people on bicycles, that's made that pretty clear. Um, why is it so difficult to guess the bus maps? Correct. Thank you, Ms. Diamond, I heard that you cracked the whip on these emails that I've been sending to you guys, and someone told me that you've been really on top of it, so I wanted to say thank you, that isn't true. And I almost fell off my chair and got a concussion, because you actually responded to an email of mine, Aramo, I gotta say, thank you for doing your job. The bus schedules still don't have the bus maps on them, they're missing point of time lookout room, and the shopper special, um, missing any acknowledgement of where the late night bus goes as well. I mean, you don't want people to be taking the bus, isn't that the whole point? A resident who struggles with a disability, um, sorry, I shouldn't say the word struggle, but who has a disability, but struggles with taking the bus, had sent you guys an email, and sent an email that, Aramo, you were, you asked us to respond to. It was the nastiest email, the rudest email, and the most wrong email I ever read, I was like literally shocked, I couldn't believe how rude it was. We, quote, "We monitor all residential complaints of city services, and reevaluate operations based on such comments." That's a proper BS. While we welcome and appreciate your comments, we have not received other transportation complaints from residents on the location of the trolley. Again, that's another comment of BS. In fact, you took a bus survey, do you remember that, Aramo, that bus survey? Which, the comments on that were like endless amounts of, "Where are the buses? How do we take the bus tops? Can we change this?", you know, there were like so many comments on it, did you not read that? It's even listed on the website. So it was really rude of Costello to say that nobody else is complaining about it but you. That's false, that's completely false. This isn't rocket science, you put a dot on it.
So what came out of that survey was the request for the bus stop signs, and as you know, the shareholders and all this stuff, the money we've been waiting for a couple of years now, for the side of the, as you, as you...
Well, I know, but you've been waiting years for it, because the other person, the deputy city manager slash head of station slash treasurer, Pete Botch, previous, right?
That's, that's a separate issue.
So, I'm not really, this is a transportation issue, we should have this a long time ago. I was really tired of standing on here, having to talk about buses.
I know.
To you.
I'm...
You say you care, I'm not seeing it.
We do wanna encourage more folks to use the bus, and hopefully, Commissioner Tagney will get those signs on the boardwalk tomorrow, or at least figure out why they're not on the boardwalk. Because I think we've all requested them to be put up, and you just do mouthwash to our attention three weeks ago.
That's your employee. If he has not done his job, why are you letting him there?
Thank you, Ms. Wych. Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening. Looks a little atrocious out there, so please get on stage.